Good evening, welcome to the March meeting of the Hiram City Council. So we have some esteemed guests in the room tonight. We have the Chairman of the County Commission, Dave Carmichael, Post-Diplomat Commissioner Sandy Kager, County Manager Frank Baker, Michael Hughes with the EDO. Cliff?
Yes, Frank. Father has always come to say thank you. We bless you, we give you praise in all the glory and honor that is due to you. Father, we say thank you that the Word tells us that your name is a strong tower and the righteous can run in and be saved. We say thank you for safety in you, for watching you at night and keeping you through the day. Father, as always, I pray that your wisdom and knowledge lead these appointed and elected officials for your glory and for your honor. Father, in Jesus' name I pray that faith will lead you.
Amen.
That's all, Sandy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cliff. The first item on the agenda tonight, we're going to have a presentation by the Polton County Economic Development Organization, a presentation by Michael Hughes and Mr. Baker and John Grant is in the room. Michael?
Thank you. Ed, good evening, Reverend Ryan and all council members. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you this evening for a brief presentation. And just for those who may not know who I am, I'm the Executive Director of Polton Economic Development and also the Polton Industrial Development Board. This evening I've been asked to come and just as a follow-up to some meetings that occurred and perhaps in the event that the EDO finds itself in a position to be receiving hotel motel taxes to support tourism, wanted to just provide you perspective on what we think would be some priorities in terms of using that funding as we, the EDO, would perhaps be responsible for tourism countywide. So with that, I've got a PowerPoint. Go up there, please. So in anticipation of perhaps receiving hotel motel tax for the EDO, we thought it would be prudent of us to begin looking at actually developing a tourism strategy that would be countywide, a blueprint of how we would approach tourism, establish some goals, establish some specific tasks, identify who, the funding that would be available to accomplish some of those tasks and the responsibilities needed to make. And the best way to do that, in our opinion, would be to begin to prepare a tourism strategy for that. So the first, we met with a gentleman who's with, his name's Matt Carlton, he's a professional consultant that's involved in tourism development, these types of strategies, and he's provided us with a scope of work that I originally just want to share with you this evening. The first phase of that would be what we call engagement. That would consist of interviews with the Polton Economic Development Board members as well as community leadership that would be elected and appointed officials. Up to sixteen, there'd be sixteen interviews that would be scheduled over a two-week period. The next component of that engagement would also include meeting with stakeholders to really to know what will come online survey that would be developed to get input from a broader set of stakeholders in this community that would support or influence by travel and tourism in this county. The next phase of that would be an assessment that would be done. So the assessment would consist of looking at sector trends, just a brief review of the attributes and trends related to travel and tourism in Polton County. Then we would look at the survey results. Survey results would be presented clearly and concisely so that in a manner that would be useful for money to determine how we develop goals, how we develop specific program, tourist program for this strategy. And then we would do what we call a peer review. We'd identify three communities where we would assess their travel and tourism. We put together some profiles of those communities and then focus on their financials, focus on their staff capacity, focus on their strategy and also their program of evolution and how they got started and how they look forward. And then the assessment would also include a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and then a summary of all of those. And then the next phase of the scope of work would be planning, developing what we call an action plan. And at this point, we would be looking at just a two-year action plan, fiscal year '25 and '26, that would identify a set of tactics and priorities that relate to near-term travel and tourism objectives in this county. And then also related to that, we'd be looking at additional strategies that would be of longer-term interest that would require addition. We don't have substantial capital outlays, but those would be part of that longer-term strategy as well. And then we would also have this gentleman on call that needed in terms of advice if need be during this process. And the plan itself would be, let's, the plan itself would be presented to the EDO Board for review and approval at some point. But that's, in a nutshell, would be what we propose to do with the initial investment in terms of putting a tourism strategy for the entire county, for Polton County as well as the city of Dallas as well. Just getting these next two slides just real quick, just because I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. About six years ago, we were fortunate, and the county was fortunate, this is before I got here, they worked with the State Department of Community Affairs to do a tourism product assessment, if you will, of the county. They identified a number of tourism types of assets in this community. And we're looking to, I say actualize, a lot of some of the recommendations that came out of that study from six years ago. And so we have that information. We've actually provided that to this consultant, and he's excited to have some opportunity to use some of that information as well as sort of the framework or baseline for doing our analysis of possibly monitoring. One other thing I'll mention too, real quick, before I conclude, we need to establish a tourism identity for Polton, and I think this is a critical piece of doing that. Some small things that I think we could take a look at doing is a tourism website that will help create some of that identity. One of the other things we just tipped around was the idea of an app that could be used for geo-fencing so that people, as they're coming into the community, get some sort of alert warning mobile device that says, hey, you're in, you're in Polton, did you know that that was Silver Comet Trail here? There may be a restaurant that's been opened for a month. So something in all those lines, something innovative that we want to utilize the technology as best we can because we think that's an efficient way to promote tourism in our community as well. And so I will stop there and see if you have any questions.
Questions? Cliff?
How many here presently on the staff?
Presently, right now, myself and Tracy, so two.
Two. And just, I'm going to try to get these questions out. I've taken notes, and I love the idea of the app. I love the idea of having something central located. You can figure out where you're going. So your board members, how many board members do you presently have?
Seven.
Seven. And who are those seven?
Seven, total of ten. Seven are board members, three are non-board members.
And who are those seven?
Yeah, so we have two commissioners. We have a resident board member. We have the Polton Chamber of Commerce as a member. And I'm on the line on all of them.
Okay. Okay, so with the residents, how do you select, what is the criteria for them to be a part of it?
It's one, it's a resident. One resident, one resident member is on the board meeting there. They live in Polton County and are eligible to serve.
And how is that selection, was the criteria?
Usually it's taken from, from the board. They identify individuals that they think would be candidates and we approach them about serving.
Okay. And then for the survey, for the travel, who are the stakeholders? Are they specific people that you have in mind?
We haven't, we haven't specifically identified at this point. I think one of the things we'll do with the consultant is we'll identify who those stakeholders are and should be, I think business owners, I think people that have hotels might, those who have a tourism role perhaps should be included as stakeholders.
Okay. And now, I heard you mention that we would be in partnership with Dallas. So what is, how does that work?
I think what I said was the tourism study would encompass, it would be for the entire community, including the cities. So we would include Dallas and Polton or Polton.
Okay. So I know what we bring in quarterly with our hotel motel taxes because we have in abundance, not in abundance, but we have five. Dallas, how many hotels do they have? So how, okay, so we would contribute hotel dollars from Hiram that Hiram produces, generates. And we would work with Dallas. Would Dallas be contributing anything financially, bringing anything to the table?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, okay.
Dallas does, right now, I think it's between three and 6,000. Am I right? I have it on that financial sheet that we got. It's about three to 6,000 of tourism. They have, they used to have two, but I think they only have one right now.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, and we could, we would be contributing if we did 100%, would be close to 100,000, and they're contributing 6% and they would benefit from this partnership that we are providing. So it would, would there be matching of funds of any sort or are we going in just, we're bringing the bulk of the revenue, the hotel motel taxes, those dollars? And we would partner up with Dallas? Is that what we're doing?
I think what we're trying to do is develop a tourism product for the entire county.
Okay.
Well, she's asking who's putting the majority of the bill?
I think it's clear who's putting most of the majority of the bill.
Okay. Okay. And what is the timeline? Because there are multiple phases. So what does that timeline look like?
I think it depends on, well, I'll put it this way. They can accomplish the deliverable in six months, but that, it's six months from when the contract is actually signed. And then further after determine when funding is going to be available or forced to pay the consultant.
Okay.
Those are unknowns at this point.
Just working on.
So what else, putting most of the bill, so most of the tourism stuff's going to be located, as that in Hiram's, which is saying, since we've put most of the bill, or is it going to be spread out equally, but we still put most of the bill? That's really no benefit for us, right?
I wouldn't say that. We have tourism assets here that would also be benefit. As an example-
But hotel motel taxes, we supposedly spend in Hiram, right?
As an example, we, the EDO has actually provided support for the Rosenwall Museum. We've actually provided renovation funds to the leadership policy program.
That was leadership policy, I know.
I understand.
Okay, that's not the same thing as what you're talking about, right?
Well, EDO, I'm sorry, Councilman, EDO and Chambers are two separate entities, correct?
Yes, right.
So the leadership falls under which entity?
The Chamber.
The Chamber of Commerce. So the Chamber of Commerce provided the facelifts. Leadership Falls in 33, I believe, provided that. So did EDO contribute to that?
Yeah, the EDO and the app did contribute to that.
Okay. And then I have one last question. With the staff of two, how do you plan on achieving this goal of this magnitude for countywide? I know you have board members, voting board members.
So I've had some conversation with the county about adding an additional staff person that would be funded through the county. The county would perhaps provide additional funding to EDO to cover the additional staff costs associated with providing these tourism services.
So there's a possibility of additional funds being provided from the county level, and at this time, we don't know what that amount is?
I do not know what that amount is.
Okay. And when would we know?
I think that's a function of the county manager working with the board commissioners to identify what additional resources would be necessary. I think they're beginning their budgeting for fiscal year, planning for fiscal year '25, so I don't think they adopt that until sometime this summer.
Okay, fiscal, okay. Okay, I have my question.
I'm Frank Baker, I'm the county manager. I appreciate the mayor and council to be able to come and speak with Michael tonight. If I could just add a little bit to that discussion, the county actually funds a considerable portion of the EDO budget. And so they already have, they're already a stakeholder, the county as a whole. And so what we're really talking about tonight is the C6 money, the 501(c)(6) money. And that can only be used for certain things. And you're right about where, you know, where it can be used at and for what it can't be. You can't use it for salaries and things like that. So in the interim, what we have discussed with Michael is the possibility of, we have Mr. John Grant with us tonight, and he started with us a little bit before Christmas, and we're delighted to have him, especially with his background. He lived here all his life, he knows Polton County like the back of his hand, and it's great to have him on staff with us. And he's doing community relationships for us. And so that's opened up some stuff. But with this talent and this skillset, we feel like that he can come in and with no additional funding needed at this point, to help Michael with the foundation for this. The EDO was set up, in the bylaws actually, to have tourism and to establish a tourism director. And so what our proposal would be is to develop this foundation, use the information of Michael that it provided a little bit earlier, that consultant came very highly recommended to us, actually from Cobb Tourism, not Cobb Chamber, but Cobb Tourism. Michael and I both worked with them in the past. We're both retirees from Cobb County. And so we understand how that tourism got started over there. So we're kind of taking a template from them. And again, getting back to the funding issue is that the stake that we want to put in this is to have John work with Michael out of his office to get this foundation going, a good solid foundation. We have so many things in this county to offer for tourism. And that includes everything that you guys have, that we have collectively, like the Silver Comet Trail. It's just wonderful that we can do that and all the other, you know, other opportunities that we have. So the funding issue is something that, yes, we need to address that down the road, but I think we can get this thing started with minimal funding and then assess if we can get some of the 501(c)(6) money, what we can do with that, marketing and things of that nature that we legitimately use it for. So, but we realize that we can't use it for personnel. But you have a very good question because how are you going to do all this?
Two pieces.
So we have, we have what we believe is a good plan to get that started, and we'd just love to have you guys by in on the city of Dallas, because we're all in this together.
Team policy.
Because you win, we all win. Everybody wins. It's a collective effort here. And I think that's so important for us to all come together as government heads, to do this. Tourism is so important.
Absolutely.
It's so important for our economic driver. And again, we have so much to offer.
So with the, this phased project, is this something that you guys are going to move forward with, with or without the hotel dollars, Hiram hotel motel dollars? Is that a plan that you guys already have in motion?
We have not pulled the trigger, if you will, on the plan. We're just developing what that plan is.
Okay.
But obviously, we'd love to have you guys come to the table with us and be part of that process.
So even without us, independent of us investing in it, you guys are going to move forward with this?
We have not made that complete decision yet.
Okay.
But we're, again, we're still trying to gather the information. And so, you know, I've been in a discussion with my board, and, you know, the next step would be to come and speak to you guys, let you know what's going on, to let you know that we need your assistance and help.
Okay.
And then the county can make some decisions. You guys can make some decisions, and we can get this thing going if we can. But we're all in on it. We feel like it's something that's been missing. And it's really important for us that, you know, if you look at the Silver Comet Trail, you know, itself, and you have a beautiful trailhead up here, I've just passed it, I've used it for years. I'd love to ride the trail. And if, we've done some statistics over the years, and there's over 650,000 people that use that trail every year. And it's not just our citizens in Polton. Go and look at the, at the car tax, and you'll see there are other counties that come into our county, that come into your city. And so, you know, it's definitely something that is really important for us. But we have other, you know, other places that are of importance that will draw people here. And I think, you know, it's just so important. But we appreciate everything Michael's been doing and agreeing to take on extra duties to get this done. I think he knows the importance of this, especially with his experience as a cop.
Derek, you got anything?
No.
Doris?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Next, we're going to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Byrdell for completing requirements of the Certificate of Resignation to the Harold F. Holt Municipal Training Institute. She's got 42 units of credit, and she has, from the call, called Vincent Institute. She has this little, lovely little plaque here. And we have Colvis Institute of Government and the Georgia Municipal Association hereby recognizing our Byrdell as satisfactorily completed the Robert E. Norris Jr. Municipal Leadership Institute, September 29, 2023.
Woo-hoo. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know. Do you want us all to stand? How do you want us? Yeah, stand up. That means you've got to stand up. Need a hand, sir?
Okay. You need to wobble. All right, all your little frizzle feet of the jazz are there.
Wobble, wobble.
All right, y'all ready? One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Four, five, six, four, five, six.
Thank you.
Can I have him removed? And I have a motion on item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve, excuse me, the minutes from February 6, 2024 regular session and the February 26, 2024 work session.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? They have a motion on item number four.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Passes. New business, may I have a motion on item number five?
I make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2024-4 affirming the request for annexation by local act of the General Assembly.
I'll second. Discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Okay.
Is there any way that we can redraw this without having to include those people that what we haven't discussed with bringing into the city? Because most of the time, you know, when we try to bring a subdivision in, we normally try to get a petition of 100%. And we haven't approached those people about coming into the city. So is there any way that we can avoid that by redrawing this? Because I just don't, you know, that's just not my thing.
We're not bringing in a subdivision.
It is. That's why it's got to be on referendum. It's not a subdivision, but it's-
It's an apartment complex, Magnolia, is that what that is?
They don't count.
They, well, from a census standpoint, the apartment complex did impact the total, which is what put it in position. Not it alone, I'm having to do a referendum, but the total number. To answer your first question, if we were to redraw the map at this point, I'm afraid we'd have to go back to square one and start the whole process over, come up with a map that has a unified consensus among the council for annexation, and then propose, and hopefully the coming year, and then go through the same thing where we may be requested, or we may choose to go ahead and do a study upfront to present to the state delegation as was requested this past year. I don't think amending the map at this point would be something that would keep this alive as far as the bill being drawn.
So we know it wasn't the apartment complex that made us have to put it on the referendum. It was that greenfield place that we said if we encompass goodwill to go down there, that's what made us have to put it on the referendum.
No, sir, let me be clear on that. If you look at the map, and not the subset maps which showed the areas that if we were to, we'd have to take all this, it was in red. If you do away with those, we're talking about the map of the entirety of the city. The section that includes Goodwill down to Discount Tire is actually not highlighted on that map. And that is actually covered by individual annexations, if I'm saying this right, through the D book and page reference that our attorney's office was able to put together. So it's a twofold annexation, if you will look at it that way. One is the map identified by census tract data through the state's cartography office for the census, for the reapportionment office. The rest of it is those eight tracts which comprise Goodwill down to Discount Tire, which is individually being annexed in addition to, so that we would have a redrawn map showing them. So it's really the population that throws us over, out of 5% from the 3% of the total population, or 500 people. Well, we're at 400. Whichever is less, we're at 400, so we don't come near the 500. We're not exceeding 500, but we are exceeding the 3%, which is what I think they're basically refering to.
Can I add one more thing? A referendum is required when you hit residential population thresholds, but if you fall below those thresholds and you don't trigger those thresholds, the General Assembly has the express authority to still require a referendum, should they so choose. So they always have the authority to require it, but if you also hit the population numbers, you have to have it.
You mentioned one other thing about doing a petition to annex, say, a subdivision. There is a method called the 60% petition method, which we've not, I've not experienced, I know of it, I've read it, or you could have a development such as a 60% of property owners could petition to annex in, and you could annex the whole. But I've never experienced that. That's the only one that I know of, or you can have a portion of a population petition for annexation and include a complete development.
And you can also have a local referendum on the issue to begin with, of your own choosing, but that's a rarely, rarely used annexation. So I believe in the answer to your question, it is possible to do it, but we don't have the timeline for this session.
We ain't got the timeline for nothing, have we? That's what the county does. We didn't really give, we got some of the things we asked for, but not the majority of the things we asked for, right?
Well-
Yes.
The, you know, the map that you have in front of you encompasses the majority of what we've talked about as far as the annexation effort. It fills in the area, so it doesn't look like we've got two broken pieces barely hanging on. It fills in that area. It also addresses some of the unincorporated island issues that we have, which some of them, there's one or two that are out Ebo Road. The only area that it doesn't is the southern part that we had indicated going down Ridge Road. That's the only part that really was taken out. Because we are still doing that segment between Goodwill and Discount, we're just doing it as it's individually called out in the legislation as opposed to just referencing the map.
So at this point-
So at this point, are we, I just want to make sure I have my understanding in check. So because the percentage triggered the need for a referendum, so if it goes on a referendum, we now run a risk of not keeping what we thought was captured within the study or what we proposed initially. Am I getting that right? For example, goodwill, the tires, does that, and so we would be dependent on the voters to come out and vote, and we may lose what we thought we captured.
Yes. So I want to address two things. In a nutshell, the map, it's been proposed through reapportionment office, through a mapping piece of software, and in addition to several pieces of land that have been specifically included in the draft bill by a legal description. Those are all in. The map that's proposed captured most everything that was set forth that we could do by census tract under the U.S. Census to make the bill continue to move forward. Otherwise, rather than 10 or 11 legal descriptions, which we included in the bill, we would have had to include it 231. So we went with the map option plus the individual parcels that we were particularly concerned about on the north side of 278. The only area that was intentionally removed by direction would be those Greystone portions.
And that was at the request of Greystone. They didn't want to be incorporated into the city at this time.
So why did we stop at just Valley Road instead of way back up there, Billcliff, whatever you call it? Because that's what we, so I just don't understand how we had a map drawn larger and we didn't have to have it on a referendum, then we go with something smaller, less than what we want, and that has to be on a referendum. That's just, that's just...
I think if you had exactly the map and all the census tracts would correspond, there's no, there's, there's every reason to believe you'd still have a referendum. Population numbers differ between what the reapportionment office provided based on the most recent U.S. Census and what the annexation study indicated. And the General Assembly tends to defer to the reapportionment office on population.
They've got an office there, and that's all they do is the reapportionment for the entire state of Georgia.
So in other words, not based on the few houses that we included, it's more, that's the census thing that you were talking about, right, Joe?
Right.
So, because I know when we counted the houses and the people in the houses, then they'd come up with that, so you use a different formula.
And they indicated it's not perfect, their census data.
I mean, that's a long ways from perfect.
That's what they said, it's not perfect.
Absolutely.
Jason spent a lot of time working with, with their reapportionment office, and this is what they came up with.
Yeah, we've been trying to do this for over 10 years.
Well, if, if we stop now, it'll be another 10.
If it's still, if they, I just don't know what you're going to say to somebody that hasn't asked to come into the city limit. Hey, come into the city limit. Hey, why should I do that? Well, there's a possibility one day down the road, you're going to have to pay city property taxes. Nine times out of 10, you're like, well, I'm not paying them now, so why would I come in with a possibility to have them to pay that? Everybody knows the city of harm don't have a property tax right now. And as, as we all know, we try real hard to keep it that way, but eventually, time is going to run out. So what is the selling point to tell somebody to come in? You don't have one. Because I wouldn't, what?
Well, I would say it's for voting rights. During, during, during my campaign, I did speak to a lot of residents that were unaware that they were in or not in the city.
Absolutely.
And they wanted to be in the city for that. They wanted to have a voice as to who represents them.
So you think voting, and people get, it's not, it's emotional time when it's time to vote. And they're, oh, I wish I could do this, I wish I could do that. Do you wish it hard enough so you'll pay property tax one day? Yeah, I don't think so. I like you, but I don't, won't have to do that. So that's what we're going to run up against, you know. And I think if we would have known, that's the census tract, not the houses that, you know, me and you counted and stuff like that when we was coming up there, we would have known that it'd probably been a different map that we came up with. But, you know...
Well, it probably wouldn't have, because they have their own unique set of census numbers, that, numbers that we didn't have.
That's what I'm saying, they're available to us, of course.
So...
Yeah.
May I have a motion on item number five?
Okay, motion and second. I'm just waiting on the vote.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're done. Call the senator tomorrow, tell him we're off the books. Thank you all very much. May I have a mo, a motion on item number six?
I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-L1 approving the increase of the city manager's spending limit from $5,000 to $25,000.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion on item number seven?
I'll make a motion to authorize a $1,500 sponsorship, including a table for eight for the Pauline Chamber Gala on March 23, 2024, to be funded by the elected official's special events slash sponsorship budget.
May I have a second?
I don't understand this, because we've already...
Well, that's why, so we've already voted on this at the previous meeting in February to purchase a table for 1,500, or $1,250.
Actually, I'm sorry.
And that was on your motion.
Yes, and in my motion, I made multiple references to the $1,500 that were budgeted. So I feel it was like a quicks, let's change up the wording and the verbiage. But I made multiple, it started on January 30, when we had the conversation about sponsorships. And then it was moved to new business because we didn't feel we can fill the tables. However, we prematurely had that conversation without opening the invitation to our employees. And therefore, I said, we need to revisit this. We can, as we normally have done, traditionally have done, historically have done, for multiple years, I believe, at least a decade. We've always $1,500. And if I'm wrong, please let me know if I'm wrong. But have we ever voted in the past for individual seats to fill up a table of eight? So we have eight participants. When was that?
When I was in office.
So when you were in office, you guys voted on individuals?
Yes.
And what year was that?
Between 2012 and 16.
So fast forward to 2024, for the last decade, maybe two decades, as long as it's been since you were in office, we've always provided sponsorships to our small businesses, our big businesses, our nonprofits, our citizen of the year. We are losing the membership, but I always referred to the $1,500 that was budgeted. And it makes no sense to purchase eight seats to fill up a table and not go for the sponsorship, as we always have done in the past.
So we've already voted and passed the eight seats. So why is it, why is it written like this, Melissa?
That was a request of Mayor Protem Byrdell to upgrade the table for eight to include a sponsorship. So the sponsorship has a table of eight plus an additional sponsorship, which I think is like social media, website.
Five weeks of marketing and advertising. And that's what we traditionally have done in the past. And that's what I refer to multiple times. It's been recorded.
But the way this is written, if we don't vote for the sponsorship for the $1,500, the table eight goes away. But I thought we already voted and passed it.
It's already paid.
It's already voted and passed and paid.
So then, I guess it just seems a little strange, the way it's written to me.
All right, do we, if we're going to change this, do we have to decommission the last vote and then go with the...
Right now, you have a motion on the table without a second. If there's no second, the motion dies. If there is a second, then you take the vote.
So we have, we have agreed to the eight, for the eight seats, right? But then why do we...
For the sponsorship piece.
Yeah, but still send the eight tables.
It's a difference of $250. So the additional...
I'll pay the $250.
The additional vote, I mean, the previous vote was for $50.
I mean, it, we budgeted for it.
But I just wish it was like, like A and B, you know, since that, that would have been a lot simpler. But it looked like we voted for the same thing again that we already agreed upon.
Where, she wants a vote to up it from just a reserved table to a sponsorship, period.
Because that was what the understanding was. When we voted for one, it was not, it was $1,500 that we continued to reference.
When we budgeted.
The $1,500 budgeted amount, and it was also attached to the initial January 30 work session when we discussed the sponsorships. Sponsorship is still sponsorship, and that was the discussion, and this is where we are now.
I second the motion.
I just think the motion should just say for the table of eight.
We've already have that.
We already, we already authorized a table of eight.
So what happened was...
Why should they say a sponsorship?
Because she, because they...
So that happened because Jody purchased eight individual seats instead of getting the eight.
They are individual.
No, not I'm saying individual, bought a table. So purchasing the table, which we budgeted for $1,500, why wasn't that carried over? Who directed to buy them individually and not with the $1,500 that was budgeted?
I believe the city carried out the vote of the council.
That we have a table.
Tonight, the question is whether or not it's going to turn into a sponsorship.
Which I thought, I thought it would be a...
I have a motion.
Of $1,500.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Do you have a second?
Yes, I do. All in favor? Opposed? Motion does not carry. I have a motion on item number eight.
I make a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-550 with dump body from Hardy Family Ford in an amount not to exceed $80,000 to include $5,968 for outfitting, to be funded by Park Sploß and Street Sploß, $40,000 each.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just have to say one thing. With those figures, right, for 74 and then the outfitting? Okay.
All in favor? Motion passes. May I have a motive, motion on item number nine?
I'd like to make a motion to table this so we can have further discussions. We're still in the investigative stage of looking into the issues with expenditures.
Discussion?
Well, I, what exactly do we need to discuss any further? We had questions that were posed, and we had the director, CEO, CFO present, and those answers, those questions weren't answered. So what exactly, what, what do we, what is the extension of time needed or requested for?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, if there can be, typically there's going to be a motion, and if we get a second, there's going to be a proper time to roll into discussion.
I apologize.
I'll second.
Do I have to repeat that?
No. We need to look at what the agreement was for. We need to, I've been in contact with Mr. Brooks at DCA. There's some issues that we have to look into before we decide whether we move forward with a motion of this nature, or what our plans are with hotel motel. And I suggest that we take that to a work, our next work session, and I'll have a report for the board by then.
Well, I have contacted DCA, and they have already determined that some of these expenditures, as you pointed out last meeting, that...
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks pointed out, I'm sorry, that you delivered, was only $10,000 in compliance. So I don't understand why we would need more time to discuss this. We have been requesting information, the expenditure report since 2022. It is now 2024. In the first quarter, the first fiscal year that we were in partnership, there's a total amount of $46,964.28. Of that, only $10,000 was reported to DCA. So that to me, how do you come back from that? Do we come back? And I proposed an email. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if anybody received my email. Oh, actually, we did. Thank you for responding. Thank you for responding. So that email, you know, I, and this is why I placed it on the agenda, to get a clear understanding as to what and why. There were some concerns that were shared, and the answers were, the opportunity was available for those answers to be addressed. And they weren't. And we had the director present and questions, and I asked, hey, can anybody help us understand? We know out of $46,964, the audit of the fiscal year of 2022, '23, only $10,000 was reported. So there's a difference of close to 36, close to $40,000 unaccounted for. What happens, attorney, sir, what happens with the money when an entity does not spend the amount that was received within the fiscal year? Because from my understanding, I thought it has to be spent within the fiscal year that is collected.
It's all a matter of timing, because if you collect money at the end of a fiscal year, there's no way to spend it before the fiscal year is over.
Okay.
A lot of it turns on the contract, a lot of it turns on what the provisions are and when it's collected.
Okay. So it was collected last, so second quarter was the fourth dispensment, dispersment, and that was in May 23, 2003. So we had a full year to figure that out, and we still don't know where that $36,000 is. Oh, I'm sorry. We're tabling it. So if we're tabling it, when are we tabling it to, and does that mean we put a freeze on the next dispersment, which is, okay? Okay, so we wait. Okay. Got it.
I have a motion to table and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Married city staff comments, March 26 work session, right here at 6:00 PM. March 8 and 9, which will be Friday and Saturday, tough shed event at Home Depot. And we'd like to take this time to offer some farewell and best wishes to Isabella. She's deserting us, and she's on, embarking on a journey with the Peace Corps.
Three hairs.
Isabella, we appreciate your work. It was a short stay. We don't like that, but we appreciate all your good work and everything that you've done for the city.
Thank you.
Bob, you got any comments?
Uh, no.
Melissa?
I definitely want to start by thanking Isabella as well. In her short term here, she has developed the website from scratch, basically. Social media presence has exploded. Thank God that didn't happen to me. Her facility rental process has gone almost completely online, which is a help to the front office and also our administration. We love it. Her overall support of the entire administration department has been untouchable. She supports you being financed, business license, she's phenomenal. So wish her the best of luck. It has been an absolute pleasure to work alongside her. So I'm very thankful to have that. The next part is during the last meeting, Councilwoman Carroll and Mayor Protem Byrdell mentioned videos that were missing content. And Mayor Protem mentioned that she would get me those details. I have not gotten those details. So do you have them or plan to send them?
I do, but I'd rather not share that right now. I'll share it with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll do it right, you know, after we adjourn.
Okay, sounds good.
Jody, you got anything?
I will simply reiterate my appreciation for Isabella. And one of her most recent acts was to help us down the road to automating our sign permit process for businesses that are setting up shop or wishing to change or rebrand. So again, there's no end to her ability to offer a helping hand.
Bob?
No.
Tiffany? Alyssa?
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize the downtown merchants. We have Mr. Chiron that wanted to share some information, and I'm sorry, I did not get that done. So if you want to, is it okay, Mayor, that he, attorney, does he, can I have, no, you don't want to? Okay. All right. So I would like to share, no?
I was just reaching over, making sure that y'all do call for visitor businesses.
Okay, so visitor business is now opens if you would like to approach it.
That'd be if the mayor...
Okay. Okay. No, 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 no. So my comment, so March 22nd, I will be hosting an event, Seniors Helping Seniors, to get them part of the political process. That will be taking place downtown Hyrum, March 22nd. I have partnered up with an elderly nonprofit, so we will be helping them stay part of the democratic process. If you know of any elderly that would like to take part of that, please let them know it'll be on 22nd from 9:00 to 11:00 at Affectionate Cuisine here in historic downtown.
Derek? Doris?
Just best of luck, Isabella. Enjoy what you're going to be doing.
All right, any visitor business? And I have a motion on item...
He just reached his hand.
Well, come on, Tyrone. You back there waiting before, come on.
I have two, two things I was going to talk about. One was to, thank you for your time. I wanted to formally request, and I can remember it was 90 days or 120 days before an event that we can request, but I wanted to formally request using Greystone Park this year for the 15th festival. So I want to, you know, bring that up.
Do you have, do you have an actual date on that?
Yes, June 15th is the date.
June 15?
Yes, sir. It's on Saturday. We're not doing a parade this year, we're just going to do a festival at Greystone.
Okay, what time?
It'll be 12 to 5, so probably 11 to 5, party, things like that. We want to make sure we secure the date before we start actually doing the promotion. And another thing, Alyssa was going to, we are in the process of creating a Hyrum-based, small business-based tourist organization to help promote tourism in Hyrum, specifically in Hyrum, in the corridor here around the state of Hyrum. So we are in the process of putting that together. We don't have anything to present right now, but that's something that we are in the process of doing. Again, it will be more focused just on Hyrum, it'll be made up of Hyrum business owners. So we will not have any staff or anything like that, but it will be primarily focused on small businesses in Hyrum.
Thank you, Tyrone. Can I have a motion on item number 10?
I make a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Second. All in favor? Thank you for coming.